So we are now recording.
Okay, welcome, everybody. I am calling to order the June 8th, 2020, School Board Meeting of the St. Louis Park School District at 7:09 PM. As a reminder, we are conducting this meeting online via Zoom pursuant to Minnesota Statutes 13D.021, meeting by telephone or other electronic means due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And before we do the agenda this evening, we are going to do the spotlight of our 2019-2020 retirees. Superintendent Osai and Sarah Thompson, please.
Good evening, Chair Tombak, members of the board. This evening, Sarah Thomas, Director of Communications and Community Relations, and I would like to take a moment to acknowledge and honor the many, many years of service that our retirees have combined this evening. For the purpose of our reception this evening, it will be different than we've done in the past. You know, in the past, in normal circumstances, we would have convened prior to the meeting in the cafeteria with a brief, light reception and, you know, heard from our retirees and the supervisors at each of their sites. This evening, for the spotlight, we would like to share a video recording about some of the retirees, and Sarah will tell you a little bit more information about that. But first, she's gonna just spend some time acknowledging the retirees that we have this year.
Absolutely. Thank you, Superintendent Osai. So here is our very impressive list of retirees this year. Combined, they have 473 years of experience. And so you can see this list of impressive employees across the district. Some of them have retired over the past year. You'll see Karen Atkinson, she left us last spring, as well as a few teachers who finished the year strong in this learning environment and just now ended their careers, just this last week, in fact. And so we're very sad to see them go. We certainly appreciate all of their work. They've been recognized at their sites, and it's our pleasure tonight to acknowledge their many years of service to our district and to our students. And so across the board, they've done amazing work for our school district and our students. And as Superintendent Osai said, we'd like to share with you a snippet of video because the video in its totality totals almost 45 minutes. And so we didn't think we had enough time to see the whole video tonight. So we're gonna share with you a snippet of video here in a minute. But we encourage everybody to tune into our district website, our social media channels, our YouTube page tomorrow. Grab a cup of coffee, your favorite beverage, sit back and relax. We've got tribute messages from all of the principals, program leaders, from each of these individuals, talking a little bit about their wonderful service to our school district and students during their time in our district. So here's a little bit of what you'll see about each one of these retirees.
I've had the privilege to know Kathy Baldwin for the last 20 years. In that time, I found her to be kind, passionate, collaborative, and always doing what she believed is best for children. Kathy spent the last 35 years as a professional educator, 23 years in St. Louis Park, and she's been an English teacher at Park Spanish Immersion Elementary School for the past 21 years. Mrs. Baldwin, also known as Sarah Baldwin, has been a favorite teacher at PSI. Some former students have called her fun, nice, and a storyteller. She's always encouraged students to express themselves and to read widely. She regularly goes to Rummage Sales to look for more books for her students. Whenever help is needed with school events or on a committee, Kathy always happily volunteered to help. In retirement, Kathy is looking forward to trying out new adventures. I'm excited for her and I hope that she knows the positive impact that she's had on the students in our school and our school as a whole. Thank you for your service. Bye, guys. You won us, right? Thanks.
Good evening. It is my honor to say a few words on behalf of Lisa Green, our Director of Community Education. Lisa, I am so thankful to have had the opportunity to work with you for the past three years. You are a tremendous leader who cares deeply about the students, staff, and the community here in St. Louis Park. The work you've done over the years has truly exemplified our core value around learning as you've created tremendous opportunities for adults all throughout this community to engage in learning opportunities that energize and enhance their spirit. I appreciate your continued selflessness and care for St. Louis Park Public Schools. This year, as you were making a decision to retire, you notified us at the beginning of the year, which truly positioned us to be able to find someone that we hope will be able to fill your tremendous shoes. So I just want to thank you for everything that you've done and will continue to do on behalf of learners of all ages, and I wish you the best in retirement. Take care and enjoy retirement.
Hello, my name is Tom Bravo. I'm the Facilities Manager for St. Louis Park School District, and it is my honor to celebrate Jim Estes as building supervisor, 35 years here at St. Louis Park School District. What I know is that Jim Estes always smiles at his details for keeping a building clean and ready for students and staff has been meticulously. All the principals say that he is ready, always ready, when students and staff come in the fall. Congratulations, Jim, and we wish you the best.
So as I said, we've got an impressive slate of retirees.
Now, Secretary of Homeland Security under President Obama, Jay Johnson.
We will miss them terribly. They've done an amazing amount of service to our schools and our students this year. It's really unfortunate that we weren't able to celebrate them in person with a reception. But we are excited that in preparing this video, we will be able to celebrate them with the greater community in a way that we haven't been able to before. So we are excited that we will be able to do something a little bit broader this year because of the pandemic. So thank you to all of our retirees.
This is Laura McLendon, and I just want to give a shout out to Mr. Baker and Mr. McCackren because I had them when I was in middle school and in high school. So definitely remember some fun times in both of their classes, and they are pretty amazing educators. And I'm glad that a whole lot of our students got to experience the teaching that they were able to offer. So thank you.
Okay, well, thank you so much for doing the presentation and for gathering that video. Sarah, I completely agree that it is so unfortunate that all of these retirees and people who worked so long and hard in our district did not get the retirement celebration that they deserved. I'm so sorry to each of you, but thank you so, so, so much for everything you have done over the years for this district and for these students. We will remain grateful to you, and most especially because she is here with us right now, to Lisa Green. You have one more board meeting left?
Yes, one more, and I'll be giving a presentation.
Okay, good. Then forget it. We're not even gonna say goodbye to you now. We're just gonna wait and do that later. Thank you. All right, thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to our meeting with the approval of the agenda. It is recommended that the school board approve the agenda for June 8th, 2020 as follows. First, we will have Superintendent Osai's report. Then we will have our discussion items, which will include the strategic plan update, a graduation ceremony update, a fiscal year '21 budget discussion, a recap of the school board gathering with high school students, a discussion of the use of school resource officers in the district, a discussion and presentation on George Floyd and the movement for racial justice. Then we will be doing policy development first readings of Policies 208, 610, 707, 708, 710, and 711. Then we will have our consent agenda, communications and transmittals, followed by adjournment. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
No, moved. Heather.
Moved by Heather, second.
Laura.
Second by Laura. Thank you. Okay, Mary Tombak says aye. Heather Wilsie.
Aye.
Anne Casey.
Aye.
Colin Cox.
Aye.
Ken Morrison.
Aye.
Laura McLendon.
Aye.
Karen Waters.
Aye.
Passes 7-0. Okay, first up Superintendent Osai's report.
Good evening, Chair Tombak, members of the board. This evening, for my report, I would like to highlight a couple of recent events that have occurred here in the district. And the first thing I would like to do is just take a moment. I mean, this is probably, you've noticed, this has been a theme in each of my recent superintendent's reports, just to really take a moment and acknowledge our seniors, the class of 2020. I know, Chair Tombak, as you were just commenting on our recent retirees and, you know, the loss of being able to send them off in a traditional manner. Our class of 2020 has also had to have some unconventional ways of being celebrated as they conclude their time here in St. Louis Park Public Schools. And over the past couple of weeks, our high school principals delivered 315 boxes, which the boxes contain graduation caps and gowns, stalls, personal letters from individual staff members and teachers, National Honor Society tassels, international backglowier at medals, diploma covers, and completed coursework and artwork. And I've had a chance to look in those boxes, and I really want to just commend our staff for all of their hard work putting those together, and also just acknowledge our leaders at the high school for taking two weeks to go around and personally deliver those and take a moment of celebration with each of our seniors in the class of 2020. And I'm looking forward to June 23rd, and I know you'll hear a little bit more about that later in our presentation, where we'll have another opportunity to acknowledge the contributions of this tremendous class. Next, I would like to take a moment to thank all of our elementary sites and our early childhood educators. Last week, across the district, all of our elementary sites and early childhood educators spent time and with different car parades, really saying goodbye and closing up the school year with celebrations at our sites. I know that I attended a couple of these events, and they were filled with great energy, music, fun. And it was tremendous to see not only the smiles on our students' faces as they had a chance to see their teachers and staff members in person, but also the smiles on our staff members' faces. You know, I don't ever want to underestimate the impact that our students have on our staff. And if I heard it once, I heard it 5,000 times how much our teachers missed, and our staff missed our students during this time of school closure. So for them to be able to connect one more time before heading into summer, it was great. And I mean, I'm hopeful that, you know, as we come back in the fall, that we'll be able to figure out a delivery method of instruction that keeps everyone safe, but really helps to energize and enhance everybody's spirit. And then lastly, I just want to take a moment and, first of all, again, express great feel of gratitude to our nutrition services staff, our transportation providers. Over the past couple of months, they've done a tremendous job providing meals. I think at the last count, I heard there were over 70,000 meals served from March 18th through the end of the school year. And as we head into the summer, we will continue to provide our summer feeding program as we have in past years. What you'll notice that's a little bit different about this year is that we will be, we've added a site for our summer meals program. And I just want to make sure that for, also to acknowledge the Sheridan story. On Thursdays and Fridays, which are generally days in which we generally do our meal delivery, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, on Wednesday, providing meals for Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. And on Thursdays and Fridays, there will also include bags of non-perishable food items from the Sheridan story. So I want to thank them for their continued partnership in support of our students and families here in St. Louis Park. And that concludes my presentation for this evening.
Thank you very much, Superintendent Osai. And if I could just throw out there with respect to the Sheridan story. For any folks who are listening, if you have the means to donate to the Sheridan story, they are doing a lot of drives right now because they are pretty instrumental in some of the donations and distributions going out to people in need who have been affected by access to necessary goods during the protests in the last couple of weeks. So I know that they are in need of some additional funding. So just wanted to add that. Okay, first on our discussion items is the strategic plan update. So Sarah Thompson, Director of Communications and Community Relations, will provide us the update on the development of the 2020-2025 strategic plan.
Thank you, Chair Tombak, members of the board. I'd like to give you just a brief update tonight on the strategic plan for racial equity transformation. You've been hearing a lot about this from me, and just want to give you an update tonight. I would like to let you know that we've been delayed a little bit due to COVID-19. As you can imagine, things have backed up a little bit due to things being on the front burner with COVID-19 and our inability to meet with lots of groups in person. And so things have backed up a little bit, so I wanted to give you some updates on some slides and timelines. So if we can move forward, that would be great. Thank you. So our timeline has slid a little bit, so I bolded some of the timeline here. So March through May, recruiting, doing a scan, gathering stakeholder input. And June and July, the youth conference and the data book, those things are all still happening. They've just slid a little bit in terms of what months they're happening. So we were planning to have them happen a little earlier in the timeline. Now they're happening a little bit later in the timeline. We're still on track to complete them within the scope of the plan. They've, like I said, just slid a little bit later in that timeline. We also were looking at a two-day youth conference. It's looking like we're going to back that off to a one-day youth conference because we're still looking at social distancing, possibly doing maybe some of this in a virtual setting. We're thinking that both of those formats likely are more adaptable to a one-day format. We're looking at talking to some teachers, talking to different planners around youth experiences, and hearing that two-days teenagers isn't conducive to virtual learning or learning in a social distance-type format, where we have to be six feet apart from each other at all times. And so we're still working on that in terms of what can we do to have an optimal experience. But we're now also looking at July instead of June. And so doing the best we can to still provide an optimal experience for our students and get the optimal amount of data from our students to give us input into the strategic plan. So that's shifted a little bit. But with every shift comes other opportunity as well. And so we've teaming up with our high school career and technical education programs. They've received some additional grant funding, some fellowship funding, and we're looking at some opportunities to team with them and do some summer mini-grant internships, where we might be able to define some student work, where students do some data gathering from other students. So we would train some student interviewers to do some data gathering from their fellow students. And so these would be kind of student one-to-one intercept interviews that would take place over the summer, where one student would interview another student to say, what has your experience been like at St. Louis Park High School? What would you like it to look like in the future? And so we're looking at things like that to also create some other opportunities that could happen in a non-face-to-face format to get some additional input, as well as some opportunities there to bring in some additional community input. So we're looking at things a little bit differently as the COVID-19 pandemic continues. And we're looking at different items that we need to check off our list, but need to do our work differently. So it's exciting, but also forcing us to slow down so we can go faster later on. But still on track. So if we can go forward, Esther, thank you. All right, like I said, one more slide. Thank you. We are getting ready to recruit for the core planning team. So the application is up on the website even as we speak. So we're seeking members now. So if you're interested in systemic racial equity transformation for our schools and students, if you can attend all of the core planning team meetings, if you're willing to read and do some work between meetings, and if you like to seek input and feedback from your personal stakeholder groups. And then I said, are you...? Because guess what? There's a whole lot we just don't know yet. We're gonna be asking our core planning team to do a lot. And so if you're willing, we're interested in having you be part of the core planning team. So we'd like you to think about joining, and here's how you can join. And so the application is up on the website now. You can take a look at it. You can download it. You can apply online. It's a Google form. You can download it and fax it. You can email it. You can postal mail it. Sky's the limit in how you can return it to us. We're interested in really getting a broad representation of our school community, the greater St. Louis Park community. It's really important to us that we have multiple perspectives on our planning team. Really want to hear from a broad representation of our students and our community. There's really a place for everyone on this team. So we really hope that if you have the time and the energy to apply, we hope you'll consider it. Here's a kind of a demographic breakdown of what we're looking for. It's going to be a pretty big team. We've kind of earmarked 52 stakeholders in terms of who will be on the team. You can see the breakdown here from internal members as well as external members. These are not hard numbers. This is just what we were looking for when we set out to say, what would this team look like if we were going to put it together from scratch? And how would we make sure that we had broad representation, both internal and external? We wouldn't want it to be weighted too heavily on either side. We'd want to make sure that we had good representation from teachers and staff, as well as from students, parents, and community, so that neither side would be weighted too heavily. So that's what we're looking for there. Esther, if you could go forward one more time. As I mentioned, we're gonna have the youth conference this summer, one day. It's gonna be facilitated by Pacific Education Group with district leadership. We're looking for students in grades 6 through 12. A couple of months ago, you heard from me that we would be kind of opening it up to anybody who wanted to attend. As I mentioned, COVID-19 and social distancing requirements have changed some of our plans. We're now going to be inviting students to attend because we're going to have to pull down that quantity of students that we can invite to the room to a smaller number. And so we're gonna be inviting students to attend because we're gonna have to go with a much smaller number, which is super unfortunate and something that we're hoping that the pandemic over time will ease, and we can then open it back up again down the road for greater student input. Esther, if you could go forward one more. And that's what I have tonight on the update for strategic plan. Is there any questions that anybody has? Okay.
I have.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Ken.
I was gonna let others go because I keep interrupting. So I had a couple of questions. So I like the idea on the student interview, one-on-one, because I feel that you'll get some deeper information that way. So I mean, COVID's not so great, but you know, that's probably a good opportunity for us to get some great information.
Thank you.
Core planning. So the core planning team seems really, really interesting on there. But how long of a timeframe are you looking at? Because you said you have some meetings, and you go back, you do some reading, and then you do some other things and get information. And if it's like in a couple-of-month frame, that's kind of hard to do your work and your work and do that. So could you talk to that?
Yep. So the core planning team will meet in a series of five meetings, so five full-day meetings
Okay.
from August through October. And the reason they meet during that specific time range is that the board needs to have a new strategic plan in November so that the board can hear about the new plan, ask questions, ask for additional information. Because as a school district, our strategic plan will expire, and we need to have a new strategic plan in place for the new year. And so that's why the work is designed this way and in this timeline. And what we've found over time is that people prefer to have the work tightly wound into a day instead of a spread out for, you know, a two-hour time span here, there, and everywhere over a longer period of time. We've had a hard time getting people to commit to that, say, over two hours a week for a full year. We've lost people. We've lost interest. We've lost commitments. And so this has been a model that has worked for us historically for a core planning team.
Okay, and I would agree that if you can condense it down and keep a good focus, and then you're gonna be more successful.
Yep.
And then to just narrow it to one day, and then that's just one day off instead of,
Yep.
you know, three interrupted days.
Yep, and we've also had a lot of luck with, you know, these days are, these are long days, but they're, you know, they're eight to five, and they're very tightly wound, and they're committed of, you know, we will start at eight and we will end at five, and that's the day. You know, they don't run over. They don't run long. It just is what it is. And I know there's been, Ken, I think you served on parts of committees, and I think here and a couple of other board members have served on parts of committees. And so they can also speak to different parts of core planning team.
I'll just briefly chime in. The importance of the core planning team having that dedicated time is to bond with each other and build trust in a short amount of time. And you need to do that because you have to reach consensus. And everything grinds to a halt until there is consensus. So having a dedicated chunk of time in order to, number one, you gotta quickly build relationship with people that you may or may not know very well, and then find a way of working together. And I'm, am I true if this assumption that consensus is still gonna be the pivotal way of reaching agreement? Okay, thanks, sir. And then I think Anne should weigh in because she was also on the core team.
Thanks, Karen. I totally agree on the trust-building and the and the really courageous conversations that happen in the, in the, not unstructured, but the trust-building time at the beginning especially. I couldn't agree more that those, that that time is really, really important. I had another comment too, but Karen, I didn't know if you wanted to say anything else on that piece.
You go.
Okay, thanks. I'm, I agree with Ken on the, I'm excited about the student interviewers, and I wanted to share a little, something I remember from, Esther, was it the AMSD Conference last year when the Minneapolis Public Schools, they were sharing about a community kind of researchers that they had, people that they were bringing in and sending out to the community members and families to do data collection, and...
I believe it was Hopkins.
Hmm, I thought it was Minneapolis.
Maybe.
Maybe. The one I'm thinking about, I'm pretty sure is Minneapolis. They might do it too. And then, because I remember someone asked, you know, what kind of training are you giving the people who are going out and doing this? And the answer was, they're training us. They're telling us what questions need to be asked and how. And so to remember that we, when we were... to, to, to not just elevate the student voice coming in, but to make sure that we're having that student voice helping us design what we are asking for. And that, that's not just coming from adult, the adults in the room. I thought that was just a really, that was a really powerful moment for me to remember that it's not just about the answers that we get, but the questions that we ask and how. So I just want to share that.
And then you are correct, as you, that, that was Minneapolis Public Schools, obviously, these students, this was, I think they, they were using community members as well to be a part of what you're describing, so yeah.
They were. It wasn't, it wasn't necessarily students, but the same would hold for, for students, absolutely, yep.
Mary, can I make a comment?
Of course.
So again, thanks for sharing this. I think this is like second time we've seen this in recent times. And, and appreciate some of the comments about making sure that, you know, keeping it open, keeping the numbers sort of open, because I think, I keep thinking about like when we talk about racial equity and allowing people to be part of that conversation and making sure that there are different ways that people can get in and be involved and that we're not like, oh, we're at four community members, we're done, when we think that there would be valuable input from somebody in the community who, you know, for whatever reasons, wasn't part of it, didn't know about it, whatever. And I think that's the only thing that I'm interested in, just continuing to see more. This is a lot about that core planning team. And I'm still interested in hearing more about how we get, how other parts of the community get involved here. And how do they get, where do, where do they chime in? Where, where do they get to participate? Because I'm thinking there's probably a lot of people that have really great feedback and thoughts about some of the strategic plan stuff that we do that can't commit to five days of, you know, solid activities either. I think it's partially to Ken's point. And thinking about how do we make sure that we sort of hear those voices and, and capture that and also sort of show that back to the community that we heard that, because I, that's another thing that I've heard in my limited engagement, but a lot of my communications experience is just making sure that we continue to sort of reflect what we're hearing from the community and how valuable that is and where else we can use that kind of information.
So Colin, I think where you'll, where you'll see that come in is this summer, we'll be doing a lot of community engagement and input, seeking through a variety of means on, in general terms of what does the community think? So much like these questions we're asking students, we'll also be asking parents and residents of what do they think that the school should look like in 2025? And so we'll be using a variety of means dependent on where we're at with COVID-19. You know, if we're still in the place where we need to maintain social distancing and it will be electronic. But as the guidelines for social distancing ebb and flow, hopefully, we're able to get out and experience some community face-to-face. And we'll be doing more with that to ask community members what they think. So that will come this summer as we get later into June and into July and for sure back to school in August.
Any other comments or questions, anyone? Okay, great. Thanks, Sarah. We'll let you just transition right on into Class of 2020 graduation and commencement plans.
Wonderful. So Chair Tomback members of the school board, I'm happy to share with you tonight our plans for the June 23rd, two short weeks away, plans for graduation and commencement for our class of 2020. Last Tuesday, we had the celebration of the class of 2020, which was this year's virtual rendition of the scholarship and awards night. So that was last Tuesday, and coming up, as I said, in two short weeks, we will have graduation and our commencement ceremony. And so this is what it will look like this year. Obviously, as I said previously with strategic plan, graduation also looks very different this year. With guidance from Department of Education, we are no longer allowed to have our ceremony on the stadium field, as we've talked about previously. And so what we have reimagined for our graduates this year is an interactive parking lot ceremony and car parade. So if you can imagine with me for a moment, the high school parking lot, so the very large student lot, will be open to graduates and families. We're asking for one vehicle per graduate. And we will set that up to be a, a parking lot ceremony space where we will have all cars facing towards the tennis courts. And we will have large screens set up, almost if you can envision a drive-in movie theater, where we will have a visual presentation that is interactive of the graduation and commencement celebration. So it will look similar to the ceremony we would have on the stadium field. It will have musical selections from students, comments from the school board, district and high school leaders, messages from class presidents and valedictorians, as well as formal presentation, acceptance and commendation of the class of 2020. What will make it interactive is that we will have portions of the ceremony where families will interact with the graduate. The graduate will have things to do from their seat in the car. And as of today, I have very important news. As of today, we have decided that graduates will in fact exit their cars and walk up to the stage, walk across the stage and be announced for graduation. So that is, that is breaking news as of today, June 8th, 2020. So the crowd should go wild across St. Louis Park. There should be news, there should be odds, there should be fireworks. And so that's, that's breaking news as of today. So we were, you're able to make some, some headway on that today. So we're working on details exactly how to make that happen with social distancing. Staff will be wearing masks. We're working on the logistics of that, but we, we do know and we are confident now that we can make that happen. And I'll give you a few more details about that in just one second. Um, so following the graduation piece, once the graduates are back in their cars with their families, we will have a public announcement of graduates in a car parade that will follow the homecoming parade route around the high school, not through the high school parking lot. We're actually gonna use Lake Street and go fully around the high school. So what we're gonna do for families is give them some options for families and for graduates. So graduates certainly can exit their cars, go up to the stage, we're gonna have social distancing, as I said, and go across the stage and be announced as a graduate. We won't be doing handshakes, we won't be doing hugs, but we will be announcing graduates across the stage and acknowledging them and before they go back to their cars. For families who are not comfortable with that, who want to maintain social distancing, want to, or graduates who want to stay in their cars, they can do so and go with our original plan of exiting the graduation, going through the red carpet to the car parade and having the graduate announced in the car as they enter the car parade. Or if a graduate wants to be announced twice, they can be announced on the stage and again before the car parade. So options are available for families depending on what they're comfortable with for their graduate. Or if they're not comfortable with either one, that's okay too. They can, they can skip either option. So we're, we're making sure that there's options available for whatever is comfortable for the graduate and for the family. And so that's, that's the most important pieces as we're heading into graduation in the next couple of weeks. So with that, is there any questions that anybody has about graduation?
I have another question.
Go for it, Ken.
Okay, so as you were talking, I was envisioning like a drive-in where I would bring my lawn chair and I'd sit outside of my car and hang out. So that is not going to be acceptable, correct?
That is not going to be acceptable. We're gonna ask everyone to stay in their cars.
Stay in their cars for the whole ceremony.
Stay in their cars for the whole ceremony.
Which is gonna get very warm.
Um, the, the idea is the ceremony is only gonna be at tops an hour.
Okay, okay, good. And then, okay. So the parade, car parade, would people be able to get out of their cars then and then hang out on the side of the street?
The idea is that on the sides of the street are other students, community members, neighbors, everybody else who typically would be in the stands at the stadium cheering for graduates. So now they, they have an opportunity to cheer everybody on and celebrate the graduates. Is that who's like, gets to line the parade route within safe social distancing measures?
Okay, so then like my, my car and my family of eight plus my grandmother is not recommended. They should probably hang out on the side of the street and the parents or guardian and the child should be in the car. Is that what you're kind of suggesting?
Is, does your family of eight live in your house and do you drive a Suburban?
It's a small bus. So I'm just saying, for instance. So, okay, then my last question is, where are, are the board members going to be up on that stage and all again? Or have we worked through those details yet?
We're working on those plans. Right now, the plan is that all of the board members will be at the ceremony in their individual cars. The, the information about students actually crossing the stage is, is new as of, say, 3:00 PM this afternoon. So I need to, I need to have some more conversations with Chair Tomback about placement of board members. But it, but it is anticipated that the board members will be at the graduation ceremony and in some, some placement.
Okay, in a vehicle. I typically drive my motorcycle to these things, so.
There you go.
Okay.
Oh, Karen is shaking her head no.
Karen's saying no.
Motorcycles are not acceptable during this, apparently, to Karen Waters.
Think of the, the example you're setting for people and safe social distancing. Find the convertible.
I'll take the convertible then.
I'm not really sure that's any different. So let, let's worry about these details later.
Yes, we can do that.
Sarah, what happens if it rains?
Um, if it rains, then graduation is on June 24th. That is our rain date.
Okay, so for all those watching at home, probably want to save both nights in their calendars, just in case.
Can I make a comment here? Oh, Dan, did you have something you?
Yeah. Are there any accommodations for students with, whose families don't have vehicles?
There are, yeah. We're working on rental cars as well as we have rental vans. Well, we will rent vans from one of our school district transportation providers for students and families. And our high school counseling staff is working on that now to speak with students and families who might have transportation needs.
So I think I was just gonna make the comment that I'm excited that this was one of those things where it seemed like, boy, we were really trying to figure out what to do, and a lot of schools were too. And a lot of schools, I think, you know, came up with pretty good plans for what they could do during the time. But I'm, I'm glad that we took some time here to think about what we might be able to do. And I think that's paying off for us in terms of really putting off something that's sort of publicly representative of our community and what we have at our high school. And so I think it's really exciting to see that we're fortunate, maybe because we took a little extra time and we thought through this and have thought through some different options. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other questions, preparations will continue. Thanks, Sarah. And everybody else is working on this and we'll see you in a couple of weeks to graduation.
Thank you, Chair Tomback.
All right, next is the budget discussion. Patricia Magnuson, Director of Business Services, will share information with the school board about the fiscal year 21 budget. With this, we are gonna be asked to approve this budget at our next meeting on the 22nd.
Good evening, Chair Tomback, School Board Members, Superintendent O'Sai. The purpose of this presentation tonight, you can move to the next slide, Esther, is to review, as Chair Tomback said, our recommended budget for fiscal year 21 and to receive any direction before we bring the final budget to the school board on June 22nd. So I just want to go through some budget assumptions. So our basic funding formula is increasing by 2%. That's the bulk of the, it's about 70% of the general ed revenue. So it's increasing by 2%, which is already in law. We have an assumption of 370 kindergarten students for a total K-12 student enrollment this fall of 4,643. That's up 34 students from this past fall of 2019. There are no increases in any fees in the general fund or in the food service fund. We're holding class size guidelines steady at this year's level and what has been our, our previous class size guidelines. We have built in two contingencies in the general fund. Our normal $200,000 contingency that helps us address class size needs if we have unexpected student enrollment spikes or some other unforeseen needs. And this year, we also built in a $500,000 contingency for costs that, that will result from implementing our start time changes. We continue to have a 6% fund balance minimum with, according to board policy, so we're keeping our eye on that. And we also have built into the budget con, employee contract settlements at historical rates for, for those contracts that are not yet settled. And we have a market-based increase in our transportation costs. So those are some of the big assumptions. COVID-19 has been an important part of our lives for the last several months. And we've talked a lot about how to build in that unknown into our budgets. And at this point, we decided since so much is still unknown for the fall, that we build this budget for the board's approval with no additional assumptions related to COVID-19. We'll update the budget when we know more, and as soon as we know more, we'll bring some more information back to the board. But there are some potential impacts. We want the board and the community to understand that we, that could happen. So as we talked about in a previous meeting, sometimes when upheaval happens to systems, student enrollment can decline. And so if we imagine that we had 50 fewer kindergarteners than we had budgeted for, that would be a loss of $380,000 in revenue. If we had another $50,000 of students, or 50 additional students decline in grades one through 12, that could be another $417,000, a little heavier than the kindergarten loss because they're weighted at a higher level in our funding formulas. If all of our state aids were reduced by 98% as a measure the state sometimes takes to balance the statewide budget, so just a 2% state aid proration would net us a loss of $909,000. And if we had to, an additional 2% of uncollectible taxes because of impacts on our business owners and property owners, that could result in a loss of $402,000 in property taxes for a combined total of $2.1 million, um, which would drop our fund balance to 11.49% from what we are budgeting and asking the board to approve of a, of 14.89%. And all of these declines are possible. We're not building them into the budget until we know more about them. So I'm gonna just go through the budget, fund by fund. This is a summary of the general fund. We have revenues budgeted of $62,461,000 against expenditures of $64,790,000. So you could think of that as a deficit in the budget of $2.3 million. So you could think of that as a deficit in the budget of two point three million dollars. The reason that we aren't, um, cutting budgets right now is that we do have a fund balance. And we've been very planfully since the community passed the increase in the operating referendum, building up fund balance so that we can use that fund balance to stretch those funds over the ten-year life of that operating referendum. So we anticipate with this budget that we'd end fiscal year twenty-one with a nine point four million dollar, um, unrestricted fund balance in the general fund or fourteen point eight one percent. It is well above the board's six percent minimum in policy. But as you know, deficit spending, um, can bring that down very quickly. Um, I have some of the assumptions built here in the bottom. Most of those I already went through in an earlier slide. Um, these are some of the restricted funds within the general fund. So inside the general fund, there are many capital-related, um, categories that we have to keep separate from the general fund. And these items can only be spent on their designated capital-related item. LTFM is long-term facility maintenance. That's for deferred maintenance. There's a technology levy, a voter-approved technology levy that can only be, be used for technology and then operating capital that's used for other kinds of capital purchases like textbooks, vehicles, software licenses, that sort of thing. There's a planful spend down of that fund balance of about nine hundred and five thousand dollars. Um, that leaves an ending fund balance of about three point three million dollars. Um, on the expenditure side, there are some salaries and benefits in these capital-related, particularly in, um, the technology levy. Our entire technology staff is funded outside of the regular unrestricted general fund. We also hold a contingency in operating capital for unforeseen equipment or, um, other types of needs. And again, we're deliberately spending down a, a fund balance that's, um, a very, very healthy fund balance in operating capital. And then we move on from the general fund to school nutrition. You can see total revenues and expenditures. There's a slight, um, decline in fund balance of about eighty-five thousand dollars for an ending fund balance of two hundred and thirty-nine thousand nine oh seven. School nutrition has to, um, cover its own costs. And this year, we did not increase meal prices. We did do that last year. Um, and then, of course, there's salary and benefit increases for unsettled contracts built into the expenditures. So it's not surprising that their, um, budget, um, is declining slightly, but they do have a fund balance to absorb that. Um, and then in community service, um, similarly, outside of the general fund, it's an operating, um, fund. Community service includes all of the community ed programming, like, um, youth programming, senior citizen programming. Um, Kids Place, um, early childhood and early childhood family education programming runs through commu- the community service fund. They have a slightly positive, um, increase in fund balance, um, um, revenues budgeted to be just a little bit higher than expenditures and ending the year with a healthy fund balance of nine hundred and eleven thousand dollars. And then in the building construction fund, I just wanted to point this out here. It's a non-operating budget. So it's, um, when we sold bonds after the two thousand seventeen, um, voter-approved bond issue for all of the major building construction, that those funds sit and earn interest, um, in an account. And we spend, have spent those down over time, and we will be able to complete all of the projects um, that we, um, promised our voters, we would, we would be able to complete. So for next year, we're anticipating about six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in interest earnings on those bond proceeds. This year, we earned a little over a million dollars. We're just trying to be, um, pragmatic about that revenue budget. Um, as we, for the building construction fund. What we have done is assumed that we would, in the budget, that all of the expenditures, all of the funds are available for projects. What we don't know is which projects we might move forward when the fiscal year ends on June thirtieth. It's the middle of the construction season. So to try to take out variables that, um, that we can't keep track of because this isn't an operating budget. It just depends on timing of projects. We are budgeting for all of the funds to be expended. We know that that's not going to happen. We'll come in well under that budget because we have two more years of projects to complete. But we don't wanna have conversations about overspending or underspending some exact number that we, um, tried to pretend we, we could get to. Um, so that's, we just want, we think this is more transparent and will eliminate some confusion, but we'll see. Um, it's a method of budgeting. In the debt service fund, um, this is for all the types of debt. So there are some board-approved debt on our books and some, um, some voter-approved debt on our books. So, um, us, school districts are required to levy a hundred and five percent of what is needed to pay the principal and interest on debt. So that's the only reason there's a positive variance in the debt service fund. Any excess that remains goes back to our taxpayers, and you'll see that every year. Um, there's a reduction for debt service excess in the tax levy. We have a fund balance of one point nine million dollars. The state requires us to keep a healthy fund balance in debt service so that school districts are able to, um, make sure to meet their principal and interest payments. And then we do hold an internal service fund. What we do not budget within the internal service fund. Um, this account holds two things. Um, our internal self-insured medical and dental fund. And we don't budget, um, for that. We don't have enough history yet. We just started, um, with self-insured medical this year. Um, and it also holds our other post-employment benefits, um, trust. And the reason it's a large negative fund balance is because we have to, um, we have to record the actuarially accrued liability for other post-employment benefits. We have about a two and a half million dollar cash balance in this fund, and our medical and dental, um, reserve is very healthy. Um, but this is just an accounting, um, method that we have to use to show the future liability for other post-employment benefits. We do have a pay-as-you-go levy in place now, thanks to the board, um, decision-making on that, that we began for taxes payable in twenty twenty. And, um, we continue to invest the funds that we do have so that, um, over time, we should be able to cover our liabilities um, from that cash that's in the reserve. But this is just showing the, the present value of our future liabilities. And also, we carry in a trust and agency fund, um, some, some fu- funds that we hold and trust for others. So there's two here. There's a St. Louis Park Equity Fund that has some donations that are distributed by staff. And we have an early childhood family education grant that the Advisory Council, um, the ECFE Advisory Council makes decisions about, and the district is acting as a trust agent. So we have to hold them outside of the general fund. We also, um, received a hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year of VAS Family Foundation Funds. Um, those will be added to that fund balance at the end of this fiscal year that we're in. We just didn't have that in this year's budget because we did not anticipate that, um, at the end of last year. There's a lot to think about in, um, in decisions this board and other boards had made in the past and some things that we wanna think about for the future. Um, and just to remind the board that you, um, have made a lot of really great decisions to help position us for the future. There is a ten-year operating referendum, and we can thank our voters for that as well. That was passed in two thousand seventeen. That has a ten-year life, and that's an important part of our funding structure in the general fund that can be used for, for operating, um, the school district. There's a ten-year capital projects or tech levy that was passed in two thousand thirteen. That's a really important part of our program, and we've seen, especially this spring, how important our investments in technology have been and will continue to be. And having this op- this referendum in place allows us to have a, a source for, for those costs that doesn't come out of the general fund. We can't use those funds for any staffing or, um, teaching costs. But they do help us to not have to spend down the general fund for technology-related items. And that's a really important thing that the community approved for us in twenty thirteen. The board has approved some lots, some additional long-term facility maintenance funding. And again, if we didn't have that funding source available, we would have to use general fund dollars to, um, take care of our deferred maintenance. So it really helps us to remain stable and to continue to make improvements in our buildings that hopefully will result in reductions to operating costs as well. And there is an OPEB trust in place since two thousand nine. That's that other post-employment, um, trust fund that I was talking about earlier. That helps us as we have retirees who, um, are retiring with benefits in place. Who, we have, we do not have folks that are currently retiring with benefits like that. They were written out of contracts probably fifteen years ago. Um, but we do continue to have retirees that, um, had those benefits in place. And that OPEB trust gives us, again, a place to fund those items so that we don't have to draw it out on the regular general fund. Here's some other things to be thinking about. Um, as we go into this school year, knowing that we have a deficit funding position and knowing that we're at risk, um, for some impacts from COVID nineteen, we'll be, um, implementing some serious cost containment efforts to, um, as much as we can, uh, bring in a budget well below the expenditure budget, um, that we're asking the board to approve. We don't wanna, um, enter into this year cutting budgets, um, irrationally because thankfully we have a strong fund balance in place. But we do want to, um, maintain that fund balance so we can honor the great efforts that past boards and staff have made to build up a fund balance. So we'll be looking really closely and seriously at containing costs this year and moving into budget cutting, um, for the following year. We always are looking for budget efficiencies and we, um, generally end the year under budget and will continue those great efforts. There should be additional energy savings, um, not only as an, as an impact of, um, buildings being closed, but because of the construction and deferred maintenance work, we have, um, much, um, reduced our energy consumption over time. Um, we started, the board, as I said earlier, the board began a levy for other post-employment benefits, a pay-as-you-go levy. That's, that will help us, again, to keep costs out of the general fund. We've moved to a self-funded medical program, which has been very successful. And over time, what we hope is that will help us, um, as we negotiate contracts. If we can keep our medical, um, insurance costs from fluctuating wildly, we'll improve our relationships with our staff and, and improve the impact that increasing medical costs have on individual staff members. And we will continue our focus on enrollment. And as I was saying, there's some risks around enrollment this fall that we anticipate, but that doesn't stop us from wanting every single student, um, in St. Louis Park to be coming to St. Louis Park Public Schools. It's a great place to learn. So we'll be focusing many efforts on, um, making sure our students come to us. And then, as always, legislature is very important to us, and next year will be a funding year. And, um, just to talk a little bit about next steps, um, we will hopefully approve the budget on June twenty-second. And I have this sort of laid out in three fiscal years, just so you can, um, sometimes it can be confusing which year we're talking about, but we're always sort of balancing three fiscal years. But first, we'll be setting the fiscal year twenty-one budget. And then it, this fall, right away, we'll be implementing some cost containment measures that will impact fiscal twenty-one and fiscal twenty-two um, in the future. In September, um, I would think that maybe we would have a, a budget update for the board once we know more about, are we in school, are we out of school? We'll just know a little more. I imagine we'd have an update by then. And also, the board will begin to talk about levying taxes for taxes payable in twenty-one. In October, we'll know what happened with our fall enrollment, um, for the fall of twenty twenty. And then we'll begin in earnest the process, probably even earlier than that, of building the fiscal year twenty-two budget. Then, of course, we'll go back to this current year that we're ending, and in November, the board will approve the audit report. We'll have full official results, um, from this year. Hopefully, we'll be able to report to the board much earlier than that, some preliminary results. So we aren't holding our breath till November. Um, and then in December, the final levy is set, um, for taxes payable in twenty-one, which sets revenue for fiscal year twenty-two. And then in January or February, we'll probably do a second update to the budget. I'm anticipating two, at least two budget updates this year. So that's our presentation for, um, fiscal twenty-one budget.
All right, any questions, anyone?
I just wanna make a quick comment. I really appreciate how hard Patricia has worked to, um, be planful about, um, things that are imposed upon us, like the federal Gatsby rules relate to having to, um, report our liability for those old, old contracts that are still having people being served by them. And then moving forward with how we take care of our, our long-term, um, buildings, um, issues. Because, you know, roofs need to be maintained, parking lots need to main- be maintained. All this stuff doesn't, yes, it's wonderful that the community did a huge investment in the big upgrade. The, um, kind of the facelift of it all, if you will, but you still have to maintain it. And that's why having the dedicated funds to do that is so important. If, if, I wish anything that the community understood, we have about twenty-two different pots of money, and they all have rules, and we have very little say about it. We're just stuck. We have to manage with how we get the cards that we've been dealt. And, and again, Patricia, you and your team have done a great job, and thank you so much.
Anyone else?
I was just gonna echo those sentiments that it's really nice in terms of, you almost made it look too simple and easy, which has a liability in itself, but I think it's really helpful for people to get the general context of what we're dealing with here. And then when we get into the finer nuances, when you talk about some of those budget, sort of looking ahead at the cost containment measures and stuff, we'll have to be digging in deep, and it's not as simple as saying, oh, we, we can just borrow from this pot of money. Um, it's so easy to think that that's the case, that you could just do that, but it's not that easy. And I think it's just really important for us to, to repeat that as much as we can um, so that people hopefully understand that it's, it's way more challenging than how pretty and simple you made it look here. But thank you for doing that. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, if there's nothing else, again, thank you very much, Patricia. Appreciate the update, and we'll see you next meeting for, um, the, uh, when you ask for the approval. Thank you. If anybody does have any questions in the interim about the budget, please reach out to Patricia at We're Aston. Okay, um, next up, we have the recap of the school board gathering with high school students. So Board Director Heather Willsey is going to, um, share what we learned from students during that meeting. Go ahead, Heather.
Yes, thank you. Um, so we met with, um, I think about five or six high school students joined us. Um, it was last week or two weeks ago now. Um, and they just came to talk to us about anything they really actually wanted to talk to us about. Um, but some of the things that came up that we, um, were hopefully able to answer sufficiently for the students. Um, there was a lot of concerns around distance learning. Obviously, they were wondering if we're gonna have it in the fall, again, which we are unable to answer, that it will, a decision that comes out from the state, um, later in the summer. Um, but if we do have it, they were wondering if we would be able to do a better job with it. And I say we because I'm a teacher too. And, um, in, uh, they felt, you know, some issues where the multiple platforms teachers were using, especially at the high school level. Um, they felt like there wasn't a lot of communication among teachers, so it made it difficult for them to have a timeline of when, um, assignments were doing, that type of thing, as well as, um, attendance-taking. Um, and, you know, we did discuss that those things will be hopefully worked out. There's a lot of confusion when we kinda got thrown into this, so, um, assuring the students that that's something that is a focus of the district. Um, as well, another issue that came up then was also relationships with the teachers. There's a lot of concern around getting new teachers in the fall if we are in a distance learning, um, situation. And how it would affect, affect the new school start time. and how it would affect, affect the new school start time. And then we kind of concluded our meeting with them around their concerns around mental health. Not only mental health in terms of getting support they need through counselors and teachers, but also in, we sort of pushed them a little bit on what they're doing to communicate with their friends and making sure that they're continuing to have those relationships, because that's just such an important part that's missing when you're in the distance learning format. So I felt like overall it was a really good discussion. There were just some wonderful people who came to talk to us, so full of great questions. And yeah, I felt really good about the conversation. And I don't know if we're planning to have more in the future, but I would love to be involved if we do.
So yeah, this is something that the school board has traditionally done every spring. They, we go and have lunch with students and sit at various tables with a big group of them and, and have a similar conversation, but right, that didn't get to happen in the same format this year. I will add the only other thing to, that I wanted to mention, Heather, to your summary, which was perfect, is that students did admit, teenagers admitting that they were kind of over their screens.
Oh yeah, that's right.
If something as apparent was just music to my ears. But they, like all of us, are experiencing fatigue with Zoom meetings and Google meets. And you know, this format, I'm personally hopeful that maybe by October, we will all be in a room together again, spread out, wearing our masks potentially, but still being able to be in each other's, to be in the same space. So the, the students are feeling that as well. So another reason to be hopeful that we will be able to do something this fall that is at least a hybrid model or that we're able to gather on some level for some amount of time.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much, Heather. Okay, next, we are moving on to Board Director Laura McLendon. It's going to lead a discussion and reflection on the killing of George Floyd and the movement for racial justice.
I think Aston is, or Superintendent Osai is actually up next.
On the. Well, I'm sorry, I'm the School Resource Officers. Yes, thank you so much. I jumped ahead on my agenda. I apologize Superintendent Osai. You're going to present an update. Resource Officer, sorry.
Chair Tom Back rooms of the board, this evening I've just put together a brief summary or update of some conversations that we've been having over the past few days, received approximately. And just to start off, I think it's important to note that we currently have three School Resource Officers that serve us here in St. Louis Park Public Schools. We have one School Resource Officer at our elementary schools, floats around, but also provides their education. Me, Maya Harris, and Lily Rosen. And I generally always, whenever I have the opportunity to meet with people, I want to kind of get at what that compelling why, like, why is it that you are so convicted around whatever it is that you're convicted to, to move forward? And really what they offered me, and I'll share a little bit more on a, on the next slide. But what they wanted to do was borrow from the momentum around what is happening across the nation right now as it relates to School Resource Officers and in schools. And that's really important, because what I was trying to do is get a distinction of, is this about St. Louis Park Police that you have a concern about, or is this a larger issue? And there was not one concern or issue that any of the alumni offered as a related specifically to St. Louis Park Police. As a matter of fact, they shared that they've heard nothing but great feedback around the community policing model that the St. Louis Park Police are currently implementing. And more importantly, the relationships that our School Resource Officers have with our students. So I, I wanted to provide that context, because when you, when you receive two hundred plus emails, you know, it causes you to wonder if something is happening specifically with our local law enforcement agency, and that was not the case. But as we think about the larger context in which, which is happening, as we all know, recently the Minneapolis Public Schools District made a decision to serve their relationship with the Minneapolis Police Department. And we see similar actions happening across the country. So we know Portland, Oregon is, has taken similar action, I believe. Denver Public Schools is considering moving in that direction. And there, there's a group called Alliance for Educational Justice, and they're working with organizers in about twenty major cities across the country to push these similar efforts. So I share that to, to really paint the context in which we're dealing with this and that St. Louis Park Public Schools will be one of hundreds of school districts that will probably experience similar organizing from alumni over the next several weeks and months. And at the core of this is this, this belief around, you know, policing and racial justice and that, you know, like other quality of life indicators, that there is a over-disciplining and over-criminalization of students of color in public schools, right? So as, as we move forward, I, I want to share a little bit more of the context from the conversation that I had with our alumni regarding their demand to dissolve the relationship with the St. Louis Park Police Department and remove all SROs and similar police presence in our schools. And I, again, I shared like, what, what is your compelling why? And they, they talked about borrowing from the momentum of what is happening now to make changes. But they also offered a great deal of love and appreciation for St. Louis Park Public Schools. I spent over an hour on the phone with this group and there were countless stories of positive memories that they had. And these were three white female students, and they were very understanding that their lived experience in St. Louis Park maybe was, is different than their peers. And they wanted, they, they recognized that, but also don't want to continue to see a school district that may be unintentionally harming students of color. And where they, where they really recognized is that St. Louis Park is a leader in many areas. And they, they spoke about the work that we've done around gender inclusion, the work that we've done around racial equity, and that they have a belief that they want St. Louis Park Public Schools to be a leader in this area, right? And as it relates to transformative collaborative community-based change. And I, I, I paused there as I was talking to them, because I really appreciated that statement and I thought that that was fantastic. And before I move forward, I would also say that St. Louis Park Public Schools should be extremely proud of the alumni that it produces, because I had maybe a conversation with ten or twelve individuals over the past couple of days. And each of them, as I think about kind of what our goals around as it relates to academic rigor, cultural competence, and social political consciousness, each of them offered this, this idea that as, as we've talked about in the past, creating this anti-racist democracy, each of them, you know, offered that through their conversations. So I, I, I sat there, you know, being impressed and thankful for the, the work that St. Louis Park Public Schools has done to create citizens that care so deeply about our, our future and our community. But where I really pushed them as it related to this notion of transformative and collaborative community-based change, my question for them was, well, how many students and parents have you spoken to about this demand that you're making, right? Because with any sort of change like this, at the core of that change has to be the current students and families that are directly impacted. And what I shared with Maddie, who's currently in London, I said, Maddie, you know, no offense, but you know, you're in London, right? You nor your, or your family is impacted by a decision like this. And what I appreciated about their response is that by no means is it their intention to come in and take over for our current students. In many respects, what they want to do is to speak up and in their words, hold the door open for our students to be able to engage in these type of conversations. And they recognize that if there would be any further conversation moving forward, that it wouldn't be them in the forefront, that it would be our current students and families that would be engaging with district leadership and the St. Louis Park Police in determining what our future may look like moving forward. So I really appreciated that as they understood their role in, in the larger context of what we're, what we're doing here. So as, as we continue to talk, there were a couple of specific things that I thought were noteworthy and I wanted to share during our conversation today. One of those pieces was connected to the fact that they couldn't think of any good reason for why school, for, for police to have guns in schools, you know? And the question that they, they, they brought up was, you know, how often are police required to use their guns in schools? And there's this belief that they hold collectively that the uniform and gun have traumatic, you know, they have traumatic experiences or create traumatic experiences for our students. This belief that, you know, if this is about community policing and the relationship, then why is a gun necessary? And could that officer do the same thing without a gun, you know, in those, in the school buildings? They also believed that if you're going to be working in the school with youth, that as a police officer, you require additional mediation and de-escalation training. Because I offered to them that certainly all of our officers receive mediation and de-escalation training, but they hold a belief that our officers are not fully trained to deal with the social, emotional, and mental health needs of students and that there would, there needs to be further training provided. And then lastly, you know, in a similar vein, additional training around, you know, social, emotional learning and racial equity. And the piece that they, they brought up multiple times throughout the conversation is that they could list, list and cite a number of sources that highlighted the challenges of having SROs in buildings as it relates to disproportionate impact for students of color. But they said they had a harder time finding data that suggested positive relationships and the positive impact of having SROs in buildings. And, you know, believing that if it is such a positive thing to have police officers at schools, where is the data to support that? You know, as, as we move forward, I offered them some suggestions. As I mentioned previously, you know, I, I, I told them that I really struggle with out, you know, although they are St. Louis Park alumni, they'll always be Orioles. They're currently not living and going to school in our buildings or in our community. And I said, I always struggle with outside groups coming in and maybe pushing their agenda on our community and that, you know, it would be really important for them to actually talk to our students and understand what our students' greatest need is or what our students identify as our greatest need. Because what I offered to them is that I have the luxury of meeting with groups of students throughout the school year and never has a student identified a School Resource Officer as their greatest threat to them achieving their goals. Now, they've certainly identified things, but it's not the School Resource Officer that they've shared with me as, you know, holding the greatest potential threat for them to be able to actualize their dreams. So I, I thought it would be really important for our alumni to get a sense of what the current reality is, because we understand the national movement that's happening. But just as dangerous as it is to paint any group of people with a broad brush, that's those same dangers elicit themselves when we try to paint all law enforcement agencies with that same brush. So because of that, they'll be meeting with our SOAR leaders, as I thought that that would be a good group to start off with, right? They'll be meeting with our SOAR leaders this week to really understand like, how, what are the relationships like? And where is the greatest need? What do you see SOAR students as the greatest needs for yourselves here in St. Louis Park Public Schools? So following that meeting with SOAR, I will recon, I will convene another meeting with them to, you know, assess what they've learned. And do they still hold the same conviction around having School Resource Officers in our schools here in St. Louis Park? And I ultimately believe in, you know, Chair Tom Back and Director McLendon. You know, what's interesting about all of this is I would say maybe three weeks ago, I think it was Director McLendon that reached out and said, hey, I have a question about our current relationship with the St. Louis Park Police. What can you tell me? And at that point, I shared our current draft of the memorandum of understanding that I think when, you know, our, you know, Director, I'm trying to think about how many years ago this was. Now, I think it may even have been two thousand eighteen. So at the time, Director Waters was the chair. And we started looking at this and trying to revise it and improve it and update it. And I guess my point in sharing that is, is that the steps were already in motion to look at our current relationship. And I, we have such a tremendous relationship with the city of St. Louis Park and the St. Louis Park Police that Chief Harcy and I have been looking at this and modifying this. But I still believe regardless of the outcome of our alumni's conversation with students organized against racism, that it may not be a bad idea to convene a small task force of students, staff, parents, guardians, and the police to really sit down and, and during this, this time of fear, right? There's, there is a certain level of fear around policing in our different communities across the state. It wouldn't be a bad idea to sit down and really have a conversation about what do we want? Our SROs role to be in our schools and then how do we get there collaboratively? So I'm, I'm making that recommendation to the board as something to consider. Certainly, I'm not asking that you make a decision now. It's just something that I want you to think about, but I think it would be helpful for me to follow up with our alumni and, and get a sense of where are the greatest needs here currently as it relates to protecting all students, but specifically our, our most marginalized students here in St. Louis Park. Any questions for me at this time?
Superintendent Osai, I have a question. Are you going to be participating in the alumni's meeting with the SOAR students?
I was not planning, but I certainly can be present if you believe that would be helpful. I may just have to move a couple of things around, because I think they're meeting tomorrow.
Not necessarily. I just was, you know, wanted to make sure that we got information from both the student, the SOAR group and the alumni group about how they thought that the conversation went and what their takeaways were.
Yeah, Dr. Leanne Stevens has graciously, graciously offered to be a part of that meeting with our SOAR students tomorrow.
Then wonderful. I'm sure Dr. Stevens will can report to you as well. So thank her for facilitating that conversation for us. Any other questions?
I just had one possible addition. So we've made a, an active effort to engage students through the civil rights research experience. And, and that group of students has undergone some extensive training, not only from the current perspective, but also the historical perspective of racism and how do we move toward anti-racism? And I do think that the SOAR group is a really great group to be working with, possibly with the alumni. But I'd, I'd really like to have a way to capture our cohort of C R R E students to weigh in on this question. So that, that's all that I'd like to add at this point.
Thanks Karen. Ken, did you have something?
Yeah, I would agree with Karen that they, they've, that group of students that went through that training this winter and unfortunately didn't get to go on their trip are also, you know, a good resource to, to bounce some of that's off of, or at least listen to what's going on. But Leanne also led that group, so she is fantastic here. I, I wanted to say Superintendent Osai, that was fantastic. Thank you for casting light on this situation that was very trying as all these messages came through and as I walked through the community and people ask, my family ask, from different communities, ask, you know, how, what are you going to do? And so it, it's, thank you. I really appreciate that. And I also appreciate what the city has been doing with us as the school board, as we, the council and all are going through our equity journey together and, and doing some of that work with them. And I'm sure that it's going through the police officers too. So the city's doing some work, I believe. And, and yeah, I'm, I'm excited to hear what's happening through this. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I, and I, I want to just restate, and if there's anything that you take away from what I've shared, the, the, the greatest takeaway for me is how we have, St. Louis Park produces amazing adults. And I, I, I promise you, I spoke to ten or twelve alumni and each of those conversations were engaging. And I left those conversations energized about the future of our democracy. And as I think about, you know, our role as public educators, I, I, I get excited about those interactions. I had an opportunity that we have to continue to produce citizens that have a mindset around making change so that things that have plagued us as a nation forever won't continue to plague us. So I, 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 I think we have a tremendous opportunity here, but I just wanted to say that I am, I'm just so excited and honored to be the superintendent here as I think about the type of students that this tremendous organization produces. So we, we, we thank you all for your leadership and everything you've done to create the conditions for our students to graduate and positively impact the world in the manner that they are.
Any other questions or comments? I will say that I told, suggested to Superintendent Osai that we hire this group for our next referendum or any sort of community campaign we need to do, because they had their acts together in this effort, that is for sure.
For sure. For sure. That was one request that I made, um, you know, as they were making demands. I just had one demand and it was that we understood the message and that they could stop sending the emails.
Thank you very much for the message received loud and clear, for sure. Okay. Now we are going to move on to Director McLendon's, um, presentation and, and, um, facilitation of the discussion around, um, the events of last week, last couple of weeks.
Okay. So board, superintendent, members of the community that may or may not be watching right now, but maybe streaming it later. Um, this is about George Floyd. And, um, as we all know, unless you've been living under a rock, there's been a lot of energy and momentum to continue the movement for racial justice. And, um, this presentation is, or it's just, it, it, it highlights one of our, um, employees here at, um, in St. Louis Park, uh, but it also looks at how we, um, as policymakers can really be a force for change and a force for racial justice transformation in our school district. Next slide. I put that there just because, okay. So just to recap, um, on Monday, May 25th, 2020, a white police officer knelt on the neck of a black man leading to his murder. His name was George Floyd. And if you look, there's a picture of him. And I think that it's important to remember that there was a knee to his neck for eight minutes and 46 seconds. Next. Protest riots, civil unrest erupted in our twin cities. Um, in outrage over yet another black body murdered by police. The community is hurting and in need. And one of our own answered that call and began collecting donations of food, water and other essential supplies to help the communities affected. Um, and this man is Justin Cherryer. Finding a picture of Justin for any of you that may have ever met him. He's always in costume, um, and he always has like a million other people in photos with him. Um, because he is a, um, he's, he's an amazing man and he's very well loved. Um, he's a para at the middle school and he also did attend, um, St. Louis Park Schools. I went to high school with him. Um, he ended up grad, um, getting a AA degree at the Minnesota School of Business in digital video and audio production. And he joined the SLP middle school staff about a year and a half ago. And when I was talking to him, he said he has no plans on leaving anytime soon. Um, he is a videographer, which is why I highlighted his, um, his college work. Um, there was a protest or a demonstration and it included St. Louis Park students, communities, alumni, um, supporting and demanding justice for George Floyd on Thursday, May 28th. And he used a lot of his training and skills to record and document, um, the protest. And although there's not a link in this, if you go to his, um, Facebook page or even has a YouTube channel, um, you can watch it. And he did an amazing job of highlighting a lot of the community members that were there. Um, you know, he started with that and then he felt that he needed to do more. Um, we do have students in St. Louis Park Schools that do live in Minneapolis. Um, and although he may not have heard of specific students, um, he tried to contact and get ahold of some of the students that he knew, but he knew in general, just from his connections and, um, you know, him working with other people in our community that there was a need. Um, if you've seen the pictures, if you've watched the news, a lot of the access to food, water, um, other essential supplies is gone in, um, our Minneapolis and our St. Paul neighborhoods. Um, so over three days on his own, he wasn't asked by anyone. He did the legwork. Um, he collected over 10 van and truckloads full of food, water and essential supplies. And you can see the places that he donated it to. Um, so some of it was kept right here in St. Louis Park. We know that, um, you know, with the COVID-19, he's still aware of that and how that's affected our families here in St. Louis Park. But then also, um, over in Minneapolis, the, um, Wilder Foundation in St. Paul. And then, um, I think it speaks to the really amazingness of the Twin Cities is that a lot of organizations were getting so overwhelmed with donations. Uh, it's not that they didn't necessarily need them, but it was coming in so fast. It wasn't, you know, always perfectly organized and they didn't have a place to necessarily store it right away. So he ended up, um, joining forces. The Hopkins High School senior class was doing a fundraiser and he was able to drop off some stuff that was kind of left over. Um, and they were able to then get it to, I think they actually might've donated it to the Sheridan Foundation. I think that, um, or the Sheridan story. Um, so we know that it's going to people that really need it. Um, next. Um, you know, I wanted to, I was going to start with this quote by Frederick Douglass. Um, and I have this whole statement written, but, um, I'm, I'm tired. I'm, I'm physically tired. Um, but these past two weeks, it, it's, it's the, it's two weeks today since George Floyd, is that correct? No. Yeah, it's two weeks. Um, it seems like it's been so much longer than that. I mean, so much has happened. Um, you know, I, a, a, as a school board member, as an alumni of St. Louis Park, um, as someone who, um, I recognize that even as a person of color, um, being able to attend St. Louis Park Schools afforded me with, um, a certain amount of privilege. And, um, as I've said before though, we can do better. And that's one of the reasons that I ran. And, um, I'm here for four years and if I never get elected again, that's fine, as long as with my time that I have now, I'm going, I, I, I'm going to push for racial justice in our schools. That means re-examining policies that, um, have, that are racist. I don't think any of us enter into the educational field wanting to suffocate the hopes and dreams and the possibilities of our students. But, um, we all need to take ownership that by sustaining and propping up the systems that we inherited. Maybe we didn't create them, but we inherited them. And if we don't do something different, then we are complicit and complacent, just like those other officers as they watched someone put a knee to the neck of a man. So I, I'm, I'm going to pause with my space and my time and obviously open this up to other board members. Um, we have a lot of work to do. Um, but after listening to Sarah Thompson outlining our, um, strategic plan for racial equity, listening to our, I want to say fearless leader, Superintendent Ossai, as he embraced a very difficult conversation, um, with, you know, alumni that were, their hearts were in the right place and we all know that. Um, but being willing to engage in those conversations, that's what we need to continue to do. And I'm going to continue to do it. Um, and I like to think that I can still breathe right now. And so I'm going to use my breath to make sure that we set our students up and that they don't just survive our educational system, but they are able to thrive in it. Um, any other comments or people want to share? Please go ahead.
I know that it is, feels very hard to follow vulnerability and her strength and her leadership and her words, but who else would like to go next? Karen?
May I?
Yes.
Laura, thank you. That was really beautiful and important. It's important for the community to recognize that George Floyd lived here. And there was recognition of that, um, by community members over the bridge at Minnetoka and 100, um, right away. But, um, we do have a lot of work to do. We've, we've been, we have been on a racial equity journey for a long time. I'm trying to think, it's over 10 years ago since I went to my first Pacific Education Group class and, uh, started taking classes through WMAP after I was first elected and learning from Dr. Heather, um, why am I blanking on her last name? Starts with an H. Yeah. Thank you. And keep going and going and learning from Robin DiAngelo about why white fragility can no longer be an excuse for not doing my work as a privileged white woman to really embrace, understanding racial justice and equity and staying engaged. Because when we talk about courageous conversations, the easiest part for me has always been to, um, forget that I, I have to be intentional about staying engaged because the whole system is designed to make my life run smoothly. And you have to work at keeping multiple viewpoints and perspectives in your head as you're doing policy work. And that's one reason why I'm thrilled to be on the board with this group of people, um, including Ann Casey's work to lead us through a different way of doing policy so that we can be transformative. And I'm, I'm really grateful that, um, we're reading How to Be an Anti-Racist Together. That's a book I shared with Senator Paul Gazelka, who needed that reminder that not all suburban white moms need what he's offering. In fact, we need something from him and every other white elected person in this state to be transformative because it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
I can go next. So I, um, you know, I, it's so hard. Because I feel like I've strived my whole life, especially as an educator. I went into education because it is a fight I wanted to take. You know, I, I wanted to be engaged in, I wanted to support all of my students. And I look at my first graders and they all look at me with such love and such belief that I can protect them. And we start with such a young age, they, I just feel like so often I've let them down because I can keep them safe when they're with me, but there's this bigger world. And then you see what happened to George Floyd. And it's personal, you know, and in the sense that like, he, we couldn't protect him. And I know I have a lot of work to do. I sure do. I, I have, I've been very complacent in a lot of ways too, because I felt powerless. So I decided to run for school board because I know this is the place where really we can make a difference in the policies we write, in the language we use and the environment we create with Superintendent Ossai. And I really believe that I'm working with a group of people who really care and we really want to do good work. And I know that it's really tough work because my lens is as a white privileged woman and I miss things. And that's, but I'm, I want to be vulnerable to that. I want to, I want to know that those are spaces that I need to work on. And I, I just feel so safe with this board and we allow each other that vulnerability, I believe. And I want to thank you all for being on this journey and for believing so much in the difference we can make together. Thank you.
So Laura, I, I thank you for making that message, doing that message. And I'm going to try to articulate this as best as I can. There's, there's, there's a lot of work that we need to do and we're going to do it. And I'm confident in that. And, um, and there's a lot of work to be done in society. And, um, a lot of people want to return to normal. And, um, we can't return to normal. There's not a normal that I've experienced that I want to be in. So, um, that, that's, that's just kind of what I wanted to say. And, and that's where we're going with this, both in the school and in society. We need to make a change.
I think I'll follow up on what, um, on Ken there and say, and echo some of what we've heard from other people in terms of our commitment as a board. And I think back to when I was running for a board and when I started having conversations and I can remember having conversations with every single one of these people on this board currently. And where that came up as a conversation point. It wasn't that we talked about it just when we were campaigning, but that this was real things that were really impacting that everybody on this board was thinking about and has been thinking about and continues to think about and continues to raise as an issue. So I know that it's a driving force among our board, um, about these issues. And, um, I'm, I'm the single white, or not the single, well, I am single currently, but I'm the white male on the school board. And, um, so, um, you know, that's, uh, I've been privileged to get where I have, but what I try to do with some of that is, is to continue to ask these tough questions when I can and have the conversations with people in the community where I can. And so that I'm starting to, maybe as, as we heard earlier, open the door for things to start getting more of those conversations to happen, to be allowed for more of those courageous conversations. And I think I, I wanted to pick up on one other thing from Laura's presentation was about what our staff is doing, what the people in our district are doing, either as part of their roles in terms of what they do. And we heard last week or the last board meeting from our technology people and how they're embracing and thinking about issues of race and their work as technology people. Um, I think, you know, about, um, our principals who have these courageous conversations and they learn from the conversations that they have. I think about our staff that are, um, trying to do it every day. And then as we saw, people who do this outside of the school and are just doing it in the community and are unsung and are trying to do things like that. And speaking to all the things that we've heard today about the wonderful people that we have in our district and continuing to find those people, to highlight those people, to thank those people, to be in conversations with those people, to feel motivated by those people that they're encouraging. Because I think there are times where we can all get down and feel like, what is going to change? And when does the change happen? And, um, and I think we have to look to those, to all the people who are part of it and realize that it's not just up to Colin Cox, it's not just up to Heather, it's not just up to Laura. It's up to all of us to do all of this and we have lots of great people around us that are helping with that. Thank you.
Ann, did you want to say anything?
Um, the last round, so I'm going to, am I, are you hearing me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Good. Um, I, I have been, um, I've been trying to stay in listening mode and I really want to, um, I want everyone to make sure that you, what you've heard tonight, you've, you've listened to and, um, and Director McLendon's words and Superintendent Ossai's words. And, and also, um, what we heard from our high school students who spoke. And I, um, and, and Mr. Justin, I watched Mr. Justin's video of the demonstration, um, last week. And I heard, um, lots of our students in that video. And I heard, um, Dr. Stevens and other staff members in that video. And those are just voices that I'm, um, that I'm trying to listen to. And that's, um, that's the, the place that I'm trying to stay. And then the other place that I'm trying to stay is that, and I, I wrote this yesterday, I think, um, that our job literally on this board is policy. And there have been times when we have done policy work that has been anti-racist. And there have been times when we have done policy work that is have been times when we have done policy work that is racist. And I am committed to owning the places that I have been complicit, and making our policy drive the change that we need to see in this district. I think we have a fearless and incredible leader, and I think we have amazing staff members from parents to teachers to every, everybody. And we have, and we have places where we need improvement. I heard Superintendent O'Sai say, students have shared some of their, their threats to their ability to actualize their dreams. And to the extent that there are threats to students actualizing their dreams, that, that's a problem. That is work that we need to do. So I am asking for all of the community members and for my fellow board members, in particular, my fellow white board members, to work to do our work and to hold each other accountable. Because if we don't have accountability, we're all just kind of doing this in a vacuum. So let's, let's hold each other accountable. Let's call each other out when we need to. Let's support each other. One, we, Karen mentioned the book, a couple of people mentioned books. I just wanted to share, maybe I could have waited for communications, too, but because it's already come up, the Hennepin County Library, for people who are somewhere in this journey, and they want to learn more, the Hennepin County Library has made four books available for anybody without holds right now. So I know that, like, a lot of these books have been sold out at bookstores and unavailable. So if you go to the Hennepin County Library, you can get a copy of, an e, an e-copy of, or an audiobook of How to Be an Anti-Racist by Dr. Ibram Kendi, which is the book that the board did as a book study, and, and actually staff members as well did as a book study this spring. White Fragility by Robin D'Angelo, which Karen just mentioned. The New Jim Crow by Michelle Alexander, and Me and White Supremacy by Leila Saad. So that's a free, good place to start right now, because there's no wait, no wait list begin, if you, and if, or continue wherever you are at. I just ask all of us to, to, to join in the work, to jump in the work wherever you're coming from, and to hold each other accountable.
Laura, Director McLendon, thank you very much for making sure that this was on the agenda for tonight, and giving everybody else space to talk. As board chair, one of my responsibilities is to work with Superintendent O'Sai to create the agenda. And our agenda reflects our business, reflects our jobs, and reflects our priorities. It's probably a reflection of the priorities of this school board that we have. And so I vow to all of you that our agendas will reflect the priorities of our work. As everyone has, as many people have may have mentioned tonight, our work is policy. We, we make the laws of the district, and we have a big job to do. And so here, I wanted to lay out kind of the, for the community, and for all of you, and for our cabinet and Superintendent O'Sai, that you know how we can seriously, and what this means. It's something to say, we're going to work on policy, but we need to actually know the tangible steps we're going to be taking to do that. We have one more meeting, but we have a break in July, and I'm hopeful that we will all be back together in August. For July, I'm going to be sharing a reading list among the board, just to continue our work. And so please send me whatever suggestions for you have, like about really what your top, personally for you, what your top learning was, or what you really would love your board members to be looking at. I don't care if they're podcasts, or articles, books. I'm going to, we'll try not to flood you guys, but this is homework for July. Again, as Ann mentioned, particularly for the white board members who need to be more work to do in terms of recognizing implicit biases in their own racism. This is where we're going to start in July. In August, we're going to be together for a retreat. At that retreat, I'm hoping that we are going to be able to make sure that all of us get training in courageous conversations. I know that some of you have already had that, not all of us have. So many of our staff use those conversations. And so when we want to engage with our staff, I want us all to make sure that we're able to speak the same language. I personally haven't done that. I know I want to. And I think others do as well. So we're going to go there. Superintendent O'Sai and I are working to create, find, identify a professional development opportunity, which teaches us how to take the anti-racist principles from Dr. Kendi's book, and how to like tangibly actually apply them to policy change. Because again, this is kind of an abstract concept, right? Don't write racist policies. Make policies anti-racist. What does that mean, right? How do we actually identify words, identify languages? How do we rewrite phrases? How do we create space for comment? We, I just want us to know how to do that better. So that's what we're trying to do, is to find out how we get that real training to do that work. And if anybody has any ideas or leads, again, bring them to me. One of the ways that we can support this work is to support Superintendent O'Sai as he holds his staff accountable for their anti-racist work and their racist actions. So that's one of our big jobs, is to continue to support him as he leads the district. Another one of our tangible jobs is that we are leaders in this community. When we all put ourselves on the ballot, we vowed to lead. And so we need to help our community by sharing resources, as Laura did tonight, elevating voices and elevating people who are doing great work, giving them the respect and the credit and the gratitude that they deserve. One of the resources that I shared today on my Facebook page, that I'm hoping other folks can do, is take part in the Hope Speaks Project. My daughter and I are signed up for that. We have two St. Louis Park educators who are leading conversations online on race, racism, and how to work with your kids to talk about those issues. So please sign up for that. That's one resource. Becca Noble, an equity coach in our district, is leading lots of protests, or not leading, but she is helping to share information about lots of protests and gatherings, because this is, can't stop after only two weeks. This must continue. And so we can continue to share these resources and opportunities with the people in our community, because hopefully they'll be looking to us to guide them in this work. And because if we are going to be successful in our schools with this anti-racist work, we need our community to understand what we're doing, and to support our efforts to the largest extent possible. The last thing I wanted to share is that I had the opportunity to spend some time with Mr. Floyd's roommates this weekend. And when we say they're our neighbors, they are, but they are actually literally my neighbor. Mr. Floyd lived down the street from me. And Alvin told us, that my husband and I, that Floyd, apparently everybody called him Floyd, not George, just Big Floyd or Floyd, loved St. Louis Park. He loved living here. And he loved his neighborhood, and he loved his community, and he loved walking up and down Excelsior. And he loved that people waved. He would sit on his patio and his chair, and smoke a cigarette, and wave at the people walking by. And he cared about this community. And so I take it personally, and I know we all take it personally, that we are going to care for our community in his honor, and care for the students in our schools, and the staff in our schools, and the people in our community. Because he should be here doing that with us. So that is my transition to our policy work. This is our work, and I hope that the community can see. I hope that Cabinet can see. I hope that Superintendent O'Sai can see that tonight, we are engaging with this policy work in a way that we haven't before. And we are going to be elevating ourselves to our responsibilities and our accountability to do this work better. So, next. And of course, my whole computer shut down while I was flapping my gums. So really sorry, but first up, Policy Reading 208. Is that right? Is that where we are?
Yes.
Okay.
Do you want me to read it?
Yes, please. Well, I'm getting logged in and calm down.
All right. So Policy 208, Development, Adoption, and Implementation of Policies. It's been on the books since June 27, 2005. It was reviewed in 2008, 2014, and now again tonight. And we've all had a chance to read it. And I'd like to then bat this over to Ann Casey, because she, as our vice chair, has spent a lot of time thinking about how do we look at policy in a holistic way, especially focused on racial equity?
Thanks, Karen. So as Karen mentioned, this policy has been on the books and hasn't been updated in a long time. Looks like, what did you say, 2014? And it's, and it's a sort of I don't want to say generic, but it's, it is, it is the policy that says that our job is to make policy. What is, what is different, I think, is the addition of some procedures, which are not, as, as usual, our procedures aren't technically part of policy. They're sort of administrative procedures. In this case, they're board administrative procedures. So then they're not, they're, they're, they're from the board, but they're not, they're still not part of the policy. The Policy Committee really thought that it would be helpful to have kind of a checklist of, of things that we're looking for in all of our policies. And not only with our, our equity and our anti-racism goals in mind, but also put, but largely because of that. But we have so much policy work to do, and so much catching up to do. And we've had lots of policies that had lots of changes from state law and MSBA policy. So we wanted to have kind of a central place for us to be able to note what, what policies have seen what. So this, the procedures that you see in front of you are in two kind of categories, technical review categories, which largely Flower has been helping check off those technical review pieces before we even get a policy to the Policy Committee. She would be going through that kind of thing. And then the qualitative review. And the, the questions under the qualitative review, Mary, you said something that sparked a thought, and it was, you know, about not, not knowing how to, how to do this, or how do we, what are the, what are the things that we do? What are the, the words that we change to make a policy anti-racist? And I will tell you that when you look up school districts that have a policy on, who are doing policy work with an anti-racist lens, you will not find very many. There is not a lot of precedent. So it is hard to it is, it is work that we are, we are sort of making up as we go. But some of this language does come from, and I want to credit, the Albemarle, Virginia County Schools, which is the, the county that Charlottesville, Virginia is in. They have a specific policy on anti-racism, and quite a lot of resources on their website. So board members or elders who are curious about how that looks kind of, kind of more comprehensively, you might want to check that out. So these questions are sort of adapted from their policy rubric. Does this policy align with the district's mission and the strategic plan? That is the question that we should ask every single policy, every single decision that we make. Is it redundant or unnecessary? That's kind of a policy notebook question. Will this policy have a positive impact on racial equity? Is there a likelihood of adverse impacts with respect to equity? Will the policy impact any group of students or staff more than others? I think this, this next question is, is so key. And I don't think that we always do a good job of assessing this when we look at policies. And that's what mechanisms or measures will be used to ensure accountability. And then, you know, what is the financial impact for our community? And then I, I just, I wanted to put our mission on the, on the policy checklist, so that in, in front of us, every time we're doing policy work, whether it's in committee, or at the board table, or at our kitchen tables, or wherever we are right now, that our mission is, is right in front of us. And so that we're always keeping that in mind, even though it's very long and has a lot of different clauses, that it's the, that's the first thing we go to, that we can, that we can judge our, our policies against. Because I think our mission does have an, an equity and an anti-racist goal, I guess. I think, I think we I think we could, it could be better, but or shorter. But it's, but right now, it's what we have. And I think it's important to have that. Thanks, Karen. It's important to have it right in front of us. So that is why we, Mary and I wanted to bring 208 back. There was only one red line change from MSBA since the last time we saw this, or someone else saw this in 2014. Other than that, we're, we really wanted to bring this back to include the procedures, and just remind us what our role is in policy development. Mary, do you have any other thoughts?
I just wanted to add that the Policy Review Checklist is intended to be a living document that we can change and modify as we use it. We need to use it so that we are all reminding ourselves and just triggering different questions, and steps to be looking at when we're reviewing policy. So please bring it, any changes or suggestions you have on this to Policy Review Committee, or to the Chair. And we can work through those suggestions that, as we know, the nice thing about policy is we don't actually have to approve the, the, sorry, the nice thing about procedures is we don't actually have to review the policy and reapprove the policy every time we make changes to procedures. So this is something that we can be changing or modifying as we want, as we go along. So we need to, to commit to doing that. And we can only do that if we're really using it. And I, personally, you know, my plan is to actually like print it out, and to just have it in front of me every time I'm looking at policy. And you can make notes on this. I mean, well, obviously develop your own practice. I'm just imploring you to really use it and think about it, and help us make it better as we go along. But yeah, we couldn't exactly engage on a new era of policymaking without approving or revising the policy on policies first.
And, and obviously, the first policy that we should apply this to is this policy. So this is our first reading of, of 208, and we're going to see it again. So this would be a great one to, to apply that to. So please do.
Yeah. So does anybody have any initial comments on 208? Or we can talk about procedures, again, since they're our own procedure this time. So, you know, usually we just defer to Superintendent O'Sai on those, but in this case, we get to talk about them. So Colin?
Well, I was just going to say, I think at the checklist, and you said we can comment a little bit more on it, but I, it's fresh in my mind, and I wish I was better articulated on it. But we talked in, in my professional work, work at doing a race equity impact tool, and using that, and looking at things. And one of the things that I think, when I looked at that checklist, it said something about, is there an adverse effect? I think the question is probably more like, how is there an adverse effect? Most likely, there is something in our policy that has an adverse impact. And I think the challenge is asking ourselves that really hard, like, is there? We could easily say, no, there isn't. But if we say, how is there, and challenge ourselves to think a little bit harder about what that impact could be, that we might, or might not know, that that's really important. So that, I just wanted to say that as we were thinking ahead to some of these things, and trying to, as people were prepping themselves, is really challenging, really thinking harder about how it's there an adverse impact.
Yeah, or what are the adverse impacts?
Right.
Yeah, I like that. Great. Any other comments or questions?
Hi, Chair Tombit. This is Flower. I had just another comment, if I, if I may, really quick on the checklist.
Yeah.
So I think one of the other, as, you know, I was helping Ann, or Vice Chair KCN, the rest of the Policy Committee develop this, is, I think we, this current board and everyone on this column, and as the district, is really on the same page on, you know, really what we're looking for in terms of policies and racial equity and anti-racist work that we're, that we're doing. and anti-racist work that we're doing. And I think part of what I was trying to think ahead on was keeping track more formally of why we're making the changes we're making so that future boards can see that there was intentionality behind the changes that are being made. So as we make changes, why are we making them? So that if a future board has questions, they don't just eliminate something because they don't have the historical context. So that's kind of what the tracking, the second part of the checklist, is that tracking piece as well.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, well, if there's nothing else on 208, we will move on to 610, which, in my humble opinion, is a fantastic place to start identifying racist provisions and the need to enhance anti-racist provisions. I guess since I said that, I'll just, I can start with this. So every year, when we have somebody come to us and ask us to approve a field trip, for instance, I'm thinking about some of the trips to Europe, or when we have international trips that folks, teachers have come asking us about, we have always sat there and said, we are afraid that this is going to disproportionately exclude socio-economically disadvantaged kids, which we know are disproportionately kids of color. So is this trip just going to be an opportunity for middle-class to upper-middle-class kids, who are, again, disproportionately white in our community? So I'm wondering if there are ways that we can actually build some of those criteria into the policy. And I don't have the clear, I don't have the language yet. I'm sorry, because I was just working through this today, but I can certainly bring language forward next meeting for our second reading. But that's just one of the things that's on my mind, is if we always ask that question, then we should just be putting it in policy and forcing people to ask themselves the question and work through those answers before they come to the board.
Can I make a comment related to that, please, Mary?
Yeah.
So the Civil Rights Research Experience Group is the only major field trip that actually comes back and reports their findings and learnings. And I see that as a really great example of how field trips should work, especially for something of that significance. Otherwise, the trip to Europe is a vacation, even if you're going to museums or historical sites. The music ones, I have a little more gentleness to because they actually have a lesson and performance component built into it. But I would like to ponder the question if there is additional reporting back to the community, your findings after you've had the experience. And I'll just stop there.
And we'll also add, Karen, I may be wrong on this, and maybe this requires some research on our part before we finalize it in policy. But it's my understanding that a lot of the, that there's kind of built-in mechanisms in our music programs to facilitate fundraising and group fundraising that provide like very clear mechanisms by which kids who don't have the financial means to pay for it can still have equal opportunity to go. I'm just thinking about what I've learned and observed from my own son's band.
That's correct.
Right? So, you know, maybe we think about, you know, whether there would need to be some sort of model like that applied to any trip to ensure more opportunities for students, for all students to attend. And maybe that's more of a procedures issue and not a policy issue? I'm not sure, but I think that's a great, a great point. Who else has comments on this?
We, Mary, we brought this policy, and actually, all of the policies were brought to the policy committee and then to the board by Patricia as all kind of relevant to the transportation department. So we were looking specifically at the transportation provisions, which are largely in all these policies, either statutory or in MSBA policy language. I will say, though, in the one that, in the field trip policy, the one thing that's different that was added by our board is that line about the board approving international trips. So that is something that we have taken on as a precedent that could certainly be strengthened. But I just wanted to say that, that we were looking specifically at the transportation relevant pieces in all of these policies with Patricia and the transportation consultant. I don't know if Patricia wants to say any more about that.
No, I don't have anything else to add. We did, as Ann said, we didn't look at the other parts of the policy. And most of, if not all of the changes are bringing into alignment with MSBA policy.
I think in all of the policies, all of the red lines that are in here right now, at first reading are either MSBA or statutory changes, like definitions changed and that kind of thing. I don't, I think Patricia, was there anything that we added on our own? I don't.
I don't think so.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Some things that we might want to add once we start living into this policy. But yes, for now, it's pretty much matching MSBA.
Yeah.
I just want to throw out there at this point, too, just as means of education for our community. And to the extent that our, some of our newer board members who haven't done a lot of policy work before, don't know, some of the nuances of this is, MSBA stands for Minnesota School Boards Association. And they are an organization that lobbies the legislature and provides services to all school districts in the state of Minnesota. And among those services that they provide is writing of model policies, model meaning like example policies. And so we are under no obligation to adopt or embrace any MSBA policy. They are very helpful because there are some policies that law requires us to have. And so MSBA is drafting of those policies like data privacy, student, pupil data privacy, and some of the non-discrimination provisions. Certainly, MSBA's language and model policies are proven helpful and are an efficient use for us. But MSBA is not the boss of us, as I like to say. And so we can certainly investigate, do our research, and do things that match the needs and values of our district and our students. So I just wanted to remind the public and each other about that at this point. And so if at any time we say, this is an MSBA suggestion, or this is an MSBA model change, and you don't like it, or it doesn't work for you as written, or in general, feel free to speak up. Is that fair, Ann, for you to describe that?
Yes, I was looking, I was doing the mouse on the wrong computer. Yes, that is absolutely right. And that was why we, and thank you, Tripp, for your suggestion, Mary, why we added different checkboxes on that policy checklist for this is an MSBA policy versus this is statutory policy. Because there are certainly statutory policies that we really can't and wouldn't want to change the language of. But if it is sort of just an MSBA policy, then we have a lot more freedom. So absolutely true. But a lot of these things are sort of statutorily adjacent or language updates that we would certainly want to be able to see when going into our first reading or to our first round of policy committee, for sure.
Right, exactly, exactly. Okay, so, thank you. Okay, so on to, I guess I should, before I, I can certainly write some language that no one is under any obligation to embrace or adopt themselves. But do we think that it would be relevant or necessary in this policy to add provisions regarding equity considerations in proposed trips?
I'd like, oh, I'm sorry, I'll stop.
Go ahead, Laura.
No, I was on the policy review committee, because that's incorrect. So many committees. And I will say that I know that we looked at transportation as kind of a chunk, and we were, once again, looking specifically at the transportation piece. I think that, and one of the other reasons is we were also missing some policies that we needed. And I know that Patricia, you needed those for your work with transportation. But I think that we should add or consider adding something because we didn't specifically delve into that piece of it. I think we were looking more at like logistics and making sure that it aligned with MSBA policies so that we had those appropriate to match up and then get Patricia what she needed so she can continue. But I think that it's, I think that we should add some sort of language, yes.
I would, sorry to interrupt, but I would say we are required to add some kind of language at this point, because otherwise, it's still going to be vanilla. And if we want to change the policy and make it so that when somebody comes to us and asks us for permission to go to wherever it is, or to Canada, we want to make sure that they have thought about these things before they came to us. So I think we should put it in there. We are required to put something in there. And I also like the idea of having them report back. I don't know if that would be procedures or policy. I'd love to put it into the policy that they have to report back if they get authorization from the board. But I don't know if we can actually put that into the procedures or the policy.
I don't know why we can't put something in the policy that says that they are strongly encouraged to come back to the board to discuss their experiences or something like that. But yeah, with language, and even if I draft some stuff that everybody wants to, that we all want to edit, we can certainly just hold things for a third reading. Karen, did you have anything?
I did, and I lost it. It'll come back to me when I am thinking more about this particular policy. But, oh, it's back to me now. So the problem I have with some field trips is at the elementary level, not all of our schools can fundraise to the same capacity. And so we saw that example with the Westwood Nature Center field trips. You would think that that community resource would be a given for every single elementary school, every grade, every year. And it's not because of lack of resources. And I know we have been working closely with the city to try to alleviate some of that. But the bus transportation was the key sticking point. If we don't have enough money to pay for the bus, then it doesn't matter if the city subsidizes the access to Westwood. And that's something that I want us to think about robustly because it's tangential to Dr. Duffy's work with Superintendent O'Si on how we transform our curriculum to be, I'm going to get it wrong, culturally relevant pedagogy. It's all interconnected. So I think we're going to have times where we have three and four readings of policies because of the other considerations, and then I'll stop there.
No, I think that's a fantastic, another great point in terms of our practice and how we adopt policies is we can walk away from the traditional model of first and second reading. And we can have as many readings as we need to. We can hold second readings for a month. If there is, if the policy review committee wants to take something back and work on it for a couple of weeks and then bring it back to a board at a meeting, two times later, we get to dictate how this works. So I totally applaud that, Karen. And you're right, that's been a topic that people have been discussing and considering for a long time. How do we make the experiences equal or fair across our elementary schools when it comes to these trips?
Um, I'm going to suggest that this one then should go back for more review. I also want to speak out to like extended, especially out-of-state overnight or international trips, the liability and the concern of that. I mean, I'm thinking, I know that there were international trips that were planned for this year that obviously got tabled or whatever because of COVID. But COVID is not going away anytime soon. And taking students, you know, even across state lines, that really, I think it opens the school district up to some major liability issues. But then even more than that, like, you know, I mean morally, or, you know, just, you know, all of us have kids in one way, shape, or another. I don't think that that's very responsible in this given time. So I think that this policy needs to go back to, for review, for many different reasons.
Yeah, to your point, Laura, I'm wondering if just a provision in the policy, if something along the lines of, you know, the school board reserves the right to rescind approval in times of emergency. Yeah. Or something, I mean, this is certainly an area where Superintendent O'Si could pull the trigger on his own, I would imagine, as the person in charge. But if he needs any sort of, you know, support via policy for a decision like that, then that seems to be easy enough to add in. Superintendent O'Si, did you have anything to add?
I was going to say, and we had a couple of instances in February that people were supposed to be going places, and we did not let them go because of everything that was happening. So I think, you know, that makes perfect sense. And, you know, certainly it could be procedural or, you know, discontinuing to use good judgment when people are requesting to go places in the middle of a pandemic, so.
Indeed. All right, well, Ann is the head of the policy committee. Are you comfortable with taking this back to the committee? And then just letting us?
Absolutely.
Yep, just let us know then. I don't know what your meeting schedule is, but let us know when you're ready for us to put this back on the agenda for a second reading.
Super.
Anybody else have comments they want the committee to consider?
I just want to, this is Heather, and I'm also on the policy review committee. And I just want to just throw out there that this, I mean, the last time we met, we didn't look at any of these in the way that I think we actually need to look at them. I mean, I don't know about what Ann and Laura, because you're on there with me, too, but we literally, like Laura said, looked at them in terms of like Patricia's business, you know, and financial aspects. We didn't look at them through a racial lens or an anti-racial lens. And I just want to put that out there because that just wasn't where we were a month ago.
A lot has happened in a month.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So just going to put that out there.
Understood completely. I think it's still a valuable exercise, though, for us to do the rest of the first readings as a board because, you know, it either helps inform the work, you know, that goes back to the committee. Or maybe we, yeah, yeah.
No, I agree. I just wanted to put that out there, so, in full disclosure.
Understood. Any other comments on 610? Okay, hearing none. Let's move on to 707. Transportation of Public School Students. So this policy has some definite changes that I think are great. I guess these came from MSBA, Ann, about disabled student versus child with a disability.
Yeah, that language has totally changed in state law. It's not just MSBA, that person-first language is now in law.
Great. I had a question about eligibility, section four, letter A. Can we, Patricia, you might, I don't know if you're the best person to answer this, or anybody else could. It says that "The school district shall provide transportation to and from school for all resident students who reside two miles or more from the school." It seems like by practice, we're doing a smaller radius.
That's really state law, is two miles or more. We do have guidelines that are smaller than that.
We do have guidelines that are smaller than that. And we talked about that a little bit in the Policy Committee. And we're not really following them consistently because there's a lot of hazardous roads that come into place and different practices that, you know, sort of inconsistent practices that we've used over time. So what we want to do is just leave it at that because the, the state is, that's what's required at the state level. And we really will continue using our current guidelines for distances and, and then come back to the board if we want to bring something more definitive into policy. But it's more of a procedure.
Makes sense.
Mary?
Yes.
On the issue, we were just talking people first and I was just getting through this and I saw the word homeless student. And I thought, I don't know if that's still the accurate way to describe somebody or if there's some guidance on that or we have to have it codified, you know, in that sort of language or something like that. Or I was thinking, you know, a student while homeless or something like that. There was something about the label of calling somebody a homeless student that made me feel a little bit uncomfortable too. And so I don't know if we, if that's an appropriate edit or not.
Colin, like under the McKinney-Ventsoe Act, it is considered homeless high slash highly mobile students.
Okay.
It's like, it's, it's federal and state.
Okay.
So are we keeping that language because it makes it easier to align with it's, it's statutory language?
We have to because of our title funding.
Okay, just checking.
Do we use that in other places? Like if it's a public report or other places like that, can we be more sensitive to some of that for?
When we report, that's actually the title of the category. So we have to collect the data, at least internally, we have to collect it that way. We could certainly, I'm open to whatever you all want us to do externally. But for our reporting purposes, it has to be categorized that way.
Any other thoughts, comments or questions on this one? I mean, in general, this, this policy is pretty much tracking what the law requires of us in terms of transportation of students. So right, there's, this is not, unlike the field trip policy, this is not one where we have as much discretion to make changes. And I think that's the same for the next couple as well.
It is. Patricia, do you want to talk about these next couple? Just in terms of what, what they help us do? I guess there's three more, right?
So seven oh eight, I think we did not have in policy at all. Is that the one?
All three of them.
Yeah.
Are new.
Okay, so really just being silent. We didn't have any board policy to fall back on. Of course, there's things that are in law with how we're transporting our non-public students to those schools that are inside the district. So that's really just getting that policy in place for non-public students. Extracurricular transportation, the same, I'm trying to go back to my notes here. Oh. That's seven ten. Really just getting a, a policy in place. Again, we had nothing to fall back on in school board policy when we're making decisions and arrangements for extracurricular transportation. And in particular, when employees might want to use their own vehicle or employees might want to drive a vehicle that's provided by a bus company. We didn't have a policy in place that we could enforce. Same with video recording on school buses. We do have bus video on all of our buses. Obviously, that's not our property, but the videos being available to the district are parts of our contracts with any vendor that we'd have a transportation contract with. So we really need to have a policy in place. So if there's any question about the videos, we, we have a board policy to go back to. I think that's it.
So Patricia, these are like largely policy support for procedures that we already have in place.
Yep, so that we can get some consistency around them and then have the support of the school board. If any questions arose that we're following what the school board's wishes were in those areas.
Patricia, could we, as long as we're kind of bouncing around a little bit now and there are otherwise kind of parallel policies, can we talk a little bit about seven eleven, the video recording of students on buses? I think my, my knee-jerk response was to have some privacy concerns about this. And I, I understand that those aren't necessarily fair. I think I just, the lawyer in me kind of goes there anytime, you know, you're talking about video, you know, recording of people. So I, I wanted to just, you know, kind of highlight some of the the protections that are in the policy, the privacy protections that are there in terms of, you know, who else can use these and how these can be accessed. Can you say, is this a standard policy in other neighboring districts or is it a standard practice as well?
Yeah, this is my experience with video recordings. And this is the MSBA policy language. It's very hard to get a video recording out, you know, out to others besides school district personnel that need to see it or maybe police sometimes, very rarely, or site staff, or sometimes it's just that, often it's about the staff on the school buses. Because there's images of, it's hard to cut out images of people that aren't involved in the questions. So it's pretty hard to, to limit a video to just, like if a parent wanted a video of what happened to their child, it's very hard to find a clip of a video that doesn't have faces of other students in it. So this is, this is standard and it is MSBA policy.
It might be in here, I'm sorry, refresh my memory. Is this? So since we contract with Park Adams and we are not our own transportation provider, are these recording systems and video recordings, are these ours? Or do these belong to Park Adam?
They are Park Adams, but they, or MTI. Have access to them as part of our contract. And you'll see that in the contract language for both of our contractors. And you'll see it in upcoming contract language that we're currently negotiating.
And is there language in that contract then, or could we make sure there's language in the contract that limits and Park Adams and MTI's use of those for any reasons or in any ways that is in violation of our policy?
Yeah, I'll make sure of that. I'll, I, I just don't know off the top of my head right now how that reads. And I'll be sure that that's part of it.
Yeah, of course, but I would just, I would want to make sure because that, otherwise we are compromising our students' privacy if Park Adam can use those videos, how they.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm sure it's in there. I just don't have that on the top of my head.
All right, any other comments on any of these? I'm not hearing anything that's too significant from anybody that would prevent us from taking these to a second reading. Nothing? Okay.
Mary, sorry, I got one more thought about extracurricular.
Okay.
We do have an informal practice of older students driving younger students to practices. And that has caused some angst and worry off and on over the years. And I don't know that it relates exactly to seven ten, but I do worry about potential liability issues if something would happen. And I, I'm not sure exactly where, where that concern fits. But, but it's primarily going from high school to a field for practice because we don't, we don't engage buses for that. And I don't, I don't know how, I don't know how a hockey team gets to their ice rink or if that's on their own effort. But I, I just wanted to get that question out there.
I think where that would apply is the last sentence of section three. "If the school district makes no arrangements for extracurricular transportation, and students who wish to participate are responsible for arranging for or providing their own transportation." Right?
Right, yep, I see it there.
And the first line of that paragraph saying that employees are not gonna undertake organizing transportation. So that, this is our policy where we say employees are not to be involved in those kinds of arrangements. So when you say we have a practice or we have kind of an informal arrangement, families do. But we can't have employees involved in that.
And I think that therefore, right, Ann, with, in conjunction with that first sentence, right, that, well, the whole darn section. It, it, that, I, I'm comfortable with that taking away our liability or, or limiting our liability if something were to happen when two students arrange this amongst themselves or parents do or anything else. We can certainly, I mean, if, if we want it directed to our attorneys to review. Would you like that? Do you think we should?
I think I would, just in light of all sorts of litigious, is that how you say that word?
Litigious.
Litigious things going on.
Okay, Superintendent Ossai, would we be able to bring that to our council?
Absolutely, we could, we could do that before our next meeting.
That would be great. I can tell you the other, the, and this is not a matter of policy, but this is just an issue that, you know, we need to flag is to the extent that transportation issues are a problem, are we limiting students' access to participation in extracurriculars? Right?
Right.
And again, this is a matter, this is not a, I, I don't see this at this point as a policy matter, but tell me if I'm wrong or if we can build something in to consider to think about it. But I mean, you know, to Karen's point, there are athletics that require somebody to get from point A to point B for practice or to games. And then there's other extracurriculars that I imagine would require the same thing. So by this practice, are we preventing students from participating?
I think that in the committee, we kind of talked about this. It might have come up in a different policy. And it's one of those of like, I don't know how, I don't think any of us came up with a good idea of how to balance that. Because once again, we, you know, the litigious nature unfortunately of our society. And we want to make sure that we are protecting ourselves and, you know, the district as a whole. But then we also don't want to limit. I'm looking at this and I'm thinking like, I'm specifically on seven ten extracurricular and number three. And I'm thinking that's kind of where we, it doesn't say that students or parents can't or make their own arrangements. I think that maybe going back to what Karen was saying and then Mary, when you said bringing up to legal consultation, is that, is there something that we could add then that would just make it very clear of, yes, go ahead and do that, but we are not as a district responsible.
Right, what about a sentence that says students or families are free to make their own transportation arrangements?
Because I mean, like I almost think of it as like, you know, there's a lot of parents that drop their kids off at school. And I mean, if they, if something happens to them on the way to school, we're not responsible for that. And this is kind of the same, yes, they're going to a school activity or game, but we're not responsible for the transportation piece.
And maybe this isn't again, something we actually put in policy, but it's just something we are asking our club chair, our, our club advisors, our coaches and things to be, to be sharing with people. Whether it's being or otherwise asking.
I think that that's an important piece is to make sure that those people are, once again, informed and trained of the expectations. You know, just because we've done it in the past, doesn't mean that you should have A, been doing it. And B, you know, making sure that we remind people of what the expectations are.
And I think we need to have an understanding of whether transportation is an obstacle to participation.
Right.
And there's only gonna ever be so much we are gonna be able to do about that, given the cost of transportation. But it would be a helpful analysis for us as we're considering multiple pathways to success.
Yes.
Okay, so let's just add that to the list of someone, somewhere to figure out. Now, well, um, let's give thought to how we, to how we get answers to those questions. As we're moving forward. But right, I don't know that that is, belongs in policy per se. Okay, I know it's getting late and this has been a really, really long few hours. So if no one has anything else on these policies, we're gonna read this to them for a second reading with the exception of flower for your notes. Policy six ten, which is gonna go back to the Policy Review Committee. Okay, consent agenda. We only have one thing on the consent agenda this week, so I don't imagine anybody wants to pull that off. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Laura.
Second.
Second by Ken, thank you. Heather? Uh, yea or nay?
Yay.
Sorry, Karen?
Hi.
I don't know why I'm saying your name. Ann?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
Helen?
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
Did I get everybody?
Everybody.
I say I too. All right, passes seven zero. We have our former board member on the call and I accidentally almost just read her name out right now for approval of the consent agenda. Danger of having visitors in the meeting. All right, communications and transmittals.
Um, I have one and I'll keep it short. I think a lot of us heard, but Marnie Zhang, who was the Chairwoman of St. Paul Board of Education, who was only thirty-one years old, she did die of COVID on Sunday. It's a great loss to the community. Her parents were in the refugee camps and came over. So she was a first-generation Hmong in the United States. And, you know, she worked hard and she was such an advocate for the students in St. Paul. So it is a, and for that whole community. It's a huge loss. It's a huge loss. If anyone is interested, I know that there is a GoFundMe page because her and I believe her father were in the hospital for, I think, almost over a month. And they racked up quite a few, few medical bills. So if you are interested in donating that way or any other way and just, you know, just keep her and her family and her spirit with us. So that's all I have.
Thank you so much. Laura, I'm sorry, Karen?
Thank you. I have a few, sorry, I'll keep it fast. I participated in the Twin West and Minneapolis Regional Chamber Visioning Input Process. The two entities are merging and they're, we're looking for information. And I, I shared specifically how important I thought it was that the work over the next five years be proactive related to racial equity and gender equity. The second thing I The second thing I wanna celebrate is, um, Marsha Hill was in the strip in their special section on grads. There she is. Um, and then on a serious note, the, um, Minnesota, uh, Association for Children's Mental Health um, has a statement about, um, the impact of the death of George Floyd on our children. Um, they have really great resources. Um, if you need specific support finding mental health services, you can contact Amanda at info@macm.h.org. They also have, um, quite a number of really good books and resources for people to talk about with their families related to how to teach white children and teens to undo racism, um, raising race-conscious children, racism and violence, uh, resources for children ages two to five, anti-racism resources for white people, and then psychological first aid for protesters and others. Uh, this was a list created by Dr. Catherine Lindross, and, um, it's, uh, an important resource. Uh, I know it came up when we heard, um, Aston's report from the uh, alumni who care about what's going on with, um, the school resource officers, and that mental health issues are a key thing. It's something we've talked about many times as a board. And, um, this is, this is a resource that's already in our community, and that's all I've got. Thanks. Oh, and it's there, thank you Flower, you made the, you made a slide. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I think we'll take a motion to adjourn, and I just wanted to say thank you all so much, and thank you to the cabinet who has just been here for so long quietly, ready to answer any questions or concerns that we have. I am so appreciative for all of you, um, and thank you all to the board. I feel really good about this work that we're embarking on, so grateful to everybody. Uh, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, Colin.
By Colin.
Second.
Second by Ken. Uh, Karen?
Hi.
Anne?
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
I say I. Heather?
Hi.
Laura?
Hi.
Colin?
Hi.
Passes seven zero. Thank you so much, and good night, everybody.
Good, thank you.